All right, everybody, it's after six thirty now. We will go ahead and call to order our regularly scheduled meeting. And today is Monday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Got not a whole lot on the agenda now, but one or two really important things. So we'll go ahead and get started with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No public comments. We'll go to the consent agenda, item one A. That's to consider approving minutes of council meeting held on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We had no other special call meetings between then and now. Are there any questions, corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve item one A?
A second.
This motion is second, item one A. Any questions? All approve, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, no. That motion carries. To item two, discussion of possible acts regarding approval of redistricting plan as proposed by the law officer, Michael Morrison. So Mike Morrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Glad I could make my way through the crowd.
We like it like this.
I was gonna say, I was Mayor of Waco, and it was never like this.
Well, we've had a few packed crowds.
People were buying tickets just to call us names. All right, well, thank you for having me back. If you go ahead. Since I was here last time, I got, Walker Engineering gave me some good maps, and I was done with them. I gave them to the manager and city secretary for y'all to keep. What I found is that the Bureau of Census map, like we knew, was a little at odds with the city. And by my count, there's sixty-two more people in the city of McGregor than the census counted, April first of two thousand twenty. Probably, truth be told, there are a few more or less than that, but it was close enough that not a lot changed. Once I had the maps and could get a better look at the city limits, I came up with these figures of how the population's divided. Again, according to the census count, with the sixty-two additional ones I found. Ward one was just almost two hundred ninety-one people short of the ideal. And two was ninety-six and a half, ninety-seven people short. And of course, three and four were long. So obviously, we moved people from three and four to one and two. And the idea there was, one, for those of you who represent wards, not to pair you. Because the people who elected you don't want you turned out of office because a guy drives down the highway from Waco and does it to you. So if you'll go to the next one, my goal was to do this with as few changes as possible. And so if you look up in the area above the Amtrak Boulevard, North First Street, Second Street, you can see an area that has been in four, that had too many people, that's moved into one, under these lines. If you go down from Ward three to Ward two, we took people out of Ward three and put them into, you know, Ward three had two hundred and twenty people, too many. So the black arrow goes into South Jefferson, Washington, the railroad, over around Seventh through Ninth Street, and moves one, two, three, four, five, about five blocks from three to two. And then from Ward three to Ward one, I've widened that area because, and I'm just gonna walk over here. The way the map is right now, when you're coming from one down into three, it looks like it almost pinches off. Like it's really two separate pieces, but you know, depending on how you draw that going through there. And since I needed to get some people out of three and I needed to get some people into one, I chose to widen that so you don't have a concern about contribuity with that Ward line. You, like Waco, have a concern about how you run out that salient to get to the airport, and we do the same thing to get to Texas. And Texas allows that, to do things like go to airports, go to reservoirs for water supplies. Not sure, it was before my time when Waco got that through, but it's never been an issue. So I guess we did something that was okay. If you with the next slide, and what this shows, now I'm gonna go to the last slide in a minute so you can have a comparison. But this shows that we've got things in balance. The maximum deviation of your existing lines, it was better than what it looked like when I was here last month, after I got the numbers, because we were at forty-something, and you'll see in a moment, it was down to about thirty-five, thirty-six percent. That's still almost four times beyond what it needs to be. This is a maximum variation, or variance of seventy-eight people, and of course, it's between two and four. Deviation is just five point eight, that's well within the standard. If you go to the last slide, this gives you a way of comparing, and your minority profile is so well distributed that it's hard to do much that hurts it, and it's hard to do much that helps it. But you'll see that Ward one, on the far right, total minority has gone from seventy-two and a half to a little over seventy-three. Ward two from forty-two to a little over forty-three. Three drops down a little over a percent, and four drops down about five percent. From a voting standpoint, because of how the population spread, you know, Ward one is the only one where you come close to having a voting age population of a minority voter setting. So the deviation's better. I think the lines from a guy who lives out of town look like they've done as little damage as you can do and move things. That doesn't mean that those lines serve this city. Y'all are much better judge of that than me. As I told you the first day, my job is not to tell you how to do this, but to get you as close to what you want as the law allows. So if there's anything about those lines that just doesn't make any sense, I can take a shot at making changes. We just wanna keep an eye on the calendar, so you don't crowd your election calendar. But I'm happy to answer questions, happy to go home. Whatever pleases the council.
The other one, I'm a little, I'm not sure to understand the mapping of it, is this red area from four to one when you look at our map. Yeah, maybe this is better, right?
Yeah.
I was a little confused of how we got from four and mapped it up, connected it to one. So, but this does a much better job, I can see it clearly here.
Yeah.
Does anybody understand that when you look at this map? Does everybody see what he's doing there?
And the manager and I both did, we did it independently of one another, but where the census was at odds with the city, or where census blocks were split, he and I both went to Google Earth. I downloaded the photos, I counted houses, and distributed the population. And as it turned out, in the areas where your city limit splits a census enumeration block, almost all the people in the block that's been split do live within the city. So that's where we got our sixty-two people.
All I tried to do with this map is kind of accumulate.
I had more. But until I saw that, I couldn't see how, when you move four to one, how they touched one another. But you can see here that it wraps around.
Yeah, one is, you know, from a redistricting standpoint, if someone walked in here and looked at this, they'd say, well, you did two, three, and four, and one took whatever was left. It's an odd way, because it goes down into your industrial area. But one is likely to continue growing, four, of course, is going to continue growing. The two areas that were partially, that the census didn't count, were both in one. One out there, as you get close to the airport, there's a little subdivision of just a string of houses. And then one kind of out Caulfield Road or wherever down, you've got a little bit out there. That's where the people have come from.
And I guess two is pretty well locked, right?
Yeah, two is, I mean, you've gotten nowhere to go with two. And since two had to gain people, it had to gain it from one, three, or four, and of course, four didn't need to be giving up people.
Right.
Again, there's no magic to those lines. They work legally, may or may not.
And after the redrawn, I was really impressed by the, so the percentages of minority, we were talking about a half to one percent change was the max, is that right?
No, about almost five percent total minority in four. Yeah, in four. It went from fifty-four point six-five to forty-nine point five-six, so right at five percent. And most of that was in the Hispanic profile. The non-Hispanic, non-black profile actually went up a little bit. But a part of that is having to get rid of people. And your profile is so evenly split that as you pull a hundred-plus people out, you're pulling out minorities.
What did you just, I didn't, I didn't understand, you just said about that part there? So is it, say, best like Ward one, is it?
Ward one needed to gain almost three hundred people. And just based on where the population is, I was able to move almost three hundred people into Ward one and actually have a de minimis impact on the minority profile. But having to move a hundred and sixty or so out of Ward four, again, because of the population distribution, had a greater impact. But your highest minority profile district, one, remains your highest minority profile district or ward.
And how much did that change then?
That changed, it went from seventy-two point five-one, and it actually goes up a percentage, about eight tenths of a percent, to seventy-three point three-two. So it's gone up.
So it gained three hundred people and a fraction of gaining.
It gained about two hundred, about two seventy, Mayor, but yeah. And did it without, not only without hurting, but slightly enhanced the profile.
So the three hundred people came out of Ward one.
Out of my ward, or some of them.
No, three hundred people went into Ward one.
Yes. No, I'm saying, but what did, okay, where'd they come?
Yeah, go back to the map if you would.
From four and three.
From four and three.
One gets.
This area up here above the Amtrak Boulevard.
Just point right to it, if you would, please.
One gets this area inside the red.
Okay, that was in four, Andrew, that wasn't pointing up there.
And one gets this area down here, which was in three. So, and again, there are not a lot of people right here. The reason I did that again was to make it clear that that was contiguous.
So if you're a councilman in Ward one, Andrew, you got a lot of walking if you walk the streets.
Yeah, you've got more walking now than you did. But you also got more people than you did. You couldn't, I mean, if you take people, for example, if you took people out of two for one, then two's gonna have to pick up people somewhere, and all of a sudden, instead of three areas that change, would have four or five. And at least in my experience, the fewer voters that you impact, the fewer problems you end up with. Other questions? I'm a law professor, I love answering questions. Just give me a podium.
You're supposed to be asking the questions.
Well, yeah, I know, but.
Go ahead, Andrew.
So how did that impact for your ethnic group of people that in voting, once you move?
Well, Mayor, everybody's gonna get to vote, everybody votes for you. It's just, you know, the ward is, you know, it's at large, and so you have to live there. Right? So it's just, you're gonna have some different voters. But Councilman Henderson, that was absolutely, I mean, there was no way we could avoid adding close to three hundred people to your ward and continue to have a legal plan. Now, if there's a better place to add them from, but I didn't see a place to go where I could raise the minority profile slightly without tearing a couple of other wards apart.
Yes, I see what you're saying about two. You could have pushed one into two, but then you're gonna have to.
Then, then you're gonna have to, it's like a spider web, Mayor. If you tug there, everything else moves.
Kevin, do you have a chance to study this?
I did. I think it's a pretty sound plan. You always, I think it's very sound plan. You always wanna, in my opinion, when you do these things, make as little impact on the total as possible. I actually counted it in a populated blocks where there's houses. It's about nineteen and a half actual populated blocks. That's overall, you'd call it like twenty-seven, I think, or twenty-five.
Yeah, I mean, that was the point of the first, in a smaller community, the good news is it doesn't take much to fix it. The bad news, it doesn't take much for it to go out of whack.
And I'm afraid that's where we're gonna end up again.
Well, you probably will in ten years.
Yeah.
But you're gonna continue to use the two thousand twenty census. If, I think I mentioned the last time I was here, if, did City of Waco, if the City of Waco had come to me in two thousand nineteen, said, we don't want to wait for the census, we want a redistrict, I would have had to use the two thousand ten census, even though we knew it was nine years out of date. A court is going to accept the census unless you can prove, unit-wise, that you have better numbers. And what they don't do is say, well, you just added four hundred people in this apartment complex. Well, you can, when you annex, you can make some changes if you want to do that. But you're working off the census numbers and pulling in four hundred known people. But if you were to say the census is just way off, we're gonna do, we're gonna count school bus stops, or we're gonna count meters. And if you come up with a better number, it's gotta be unit-wide.
You gotta get your numbers in balance, and you cannot negatively impact the minority profile.
As long as, as long as it was unavoidable. And here, again, it's, I wouldn't have bet you money that I could keep Ward one close to where it was, much less enhance the population by pulling in almost three hundred people.
Yeah. And so if we have to do this, say, in ten years, then we'd be working off the two thousand thirty census at that time.
That's right, that's right.
You'll still be available, right?
Well, it depends. My wife's wondering if I'm with it now. I wasn't gonna do it this time, and some old clients pushed me, and so, you know, David Gwynn and I had done it for forty years, and David died, and kinda took the heart out of it for me. So I did a lot less, and no statewide stuff. And y'all were the last client I took.
Oh, that's great. So, Council, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I'm.
I was just gonna say, Council, this is on the agenda tonight to approve. And we can certainly do that. We don't have to, from a timing standpoint, but I don't know, unless someone has some compelling reason why, why we wouldn't go ahead and approve it tonight, it seems the sooner the better, again, unless there's some real reason for not doing so.
I'm pretty pleasantly surprised at how even it really is. I mean, or appears to me, from your figures here, that makes sense.
Well, I'm confident with the sixty-two that are mine. I'm less confident in the censuses, but those are the numbers we gotta play with.
Kevin, it sounds like you're good with it.
I'd recommend going forward, unless somebody like you said has a compelling reason, not to. It's easy, it's straightforward, it does not damage irreparably anybody's percentages, which, again, that's the main thing the Justice Department's gonna look at, is they do not want you to dilute a minority area to where they'd be less voter authority or power, or whatever you say. You know, this does that, and it puts it in a pretty good spot, pretty easy understanding. Gets you by another ten years.
Per se, if that was, if it was proven to be, then where would you go to first? Or how long would it be, or how would you have to go back first, changing that back, to redo it, if it did show that?
You'd wait till the next census. Until, until the two thousand thirty census comes out, you're gonna be using these same numbers. Again, as you do annexations, you may decide to make a small adjustment, if you wanna try to stay that, stay in balance. But until a new census count comes out, somebody's gonna have a tough time making a case that you're out of whack. I mean, it's de facto, not de jure.
You know, like this, the other year, the board was saying right here, say, redistricting must also avoid dilution of minority strength, either by concentrating or splitting minority strength in a way that limits the ability to elect candidates of choice.
Right.
So, that's what I'm asking, so per se, whatever.
Well, there are two things you have to balance. One is you have to balance the population. And if, and for example, you needed three hundred people. Let's suppose, I couldn't keep your profile where it was. Let's suppose to add three hundred people, two hundred and seventy people to your ward, it had to lower the minority profile by five percent. I would be required, and the city would be required to do that, they couldn't use keeping a racial block intact as a justification for violating the equal protection requirement that you balance population. That's the first requirement. And the idea is, as you balance population, under Section two and Section five of the Voting Rights Act, you're required to protect minority voting strength to the extent that you can. And if I were to add people and lower Ward one by eight percent total minority, and someone challenged it, if they could prove I could have accomplished the same thing and only lowered it by three percent, then my plan would be subject to reversal by a court.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. But if I had to go down. But if I had to go down that far to be able to balance population, then there's a legitimate governmental basis for that decline, and the court protects that.
So if you had to, I mean, if this case...
Happens all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I said, I was really surprised that Councilmember Henderson's numbers didn't go down. If you wanted to bet me five dollars or a pizza and two beers, I would've said they're gonna go down.
Andrew, you've got any other questions?
No. I'm saying, and of course, no.
Anybody else see anything about your particular ward that causes you any heartburn?
Just if I build in that one area, and I'll be warden wise, which'll be okay. That's it, but I mean, it looks good.
Stephen, you have any concerns?
No, I don't have any concerns at all.
Sure, you're at large, Paul.
Don't have a dog in the fight.
Okay, Mike, anything else we need to know? Looks like we're gonna take a vote tonight, so...
No, I think, unless there are other questions. I think the plan's pretty straightforward, I think the numbers are adequate. I think that it's, it's not a miracle, but it was unexpected that we were able to protect Ward one as well as we did.
All right, well, let's do this then. Is there a motion on item two? There's a motion to second on item two, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. Thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Your manager and secretary have this stuff.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
You all take care.
Yeah, thank you, again, really enjoyed. Okay, let's go to item three, discussion of possible acts regarding approval of the professional services agreement between Knutson LP and the City McGregor for professional consulting services for the creation of the downtown tax increment reinvestment zone number two, TERS number two.
We want to investigate this. This would be a TERS, we've talked about it a little bit before, for commercial development along Main Street, in the commercial areas of Main Street, the two central business districts, I'll get there, and then out eighty-four in the commercial areas, stopping at what will be the ranch development that's coming forward, that has a commercial in front of it. It will take in more than just commercial areas in order to capture increment, but you're going to, in the future, need to spend some money on a hundred-year-old water line that's underneath Main, and probably remove that and move it down the alleys on both sides. There will be some underground utilities with some of the work that's being done on Main Street or being planned, and then just have the ability to do other projects as needed out on eighty-four. This TERS will probably be quite a bit different in makeup. Again, what we're doing here is hiring somebody to study it and move it forward. If you approve this to go forward, we have a TERS annual meeting when, Brian?
Next Monday.
Next Monday. We'll report that to them and get their feedback, and then move forward and see if we really wanna pursue this or not. The types of differences I'm talking about is, instead of capturing ninety percent of the increment, we're talking or thinking, and again, this'll have to be, this'll have to be proven up through their work. We're thinking along the lines of fifty percent for us and the county. The county's indicated preliminarily, obviously, that they'd take a look at it with us.
So why would the county be interested when most of this is like, or a lot of this is like Main Street?
They participate in TERSs all the time in Waco that are commercial TERSs.
And that's my other question, Kevin, with the, I don't remember the exact streets, but the TERS downtown, because when we talk about TERS, we're talking about the increment on new development.
Or new value.
Yeah, and so do we really anticipate enough new development or new value in this downtown area that would make a TERS worthwhile?
Possibly, however, the one of the other things that will be different here is you probably will not be called upon to do the financing for a lot of this. A lot of this will be owner financing, and then you pay them back out of the TERS as the increment's created. Looking at a fifty percent increment for the city, fifty percent for the county, MCC has indicated earlier that they would not participate. Of course, we have to invite them by law. The school district mayor may not be able to do anything with three thirteen anymore. That's been shelved, it may or may not come back, so right now it doesn't look like they'd be involved either. It's a much smaller, much more incremental and much more paced, if you will, type of development. If you get a hotel, you might have to put in a water line or help put in a street, that kind of stuff. But again, don't anticipate any huge bond issues, with the possible exception of that water line. We've gotta get the numbers on it, too. So, not asking you to approve doing it, asking you to approve going down that road and seeing if we need to.
And again, the only reason you really do a TERS, not the only reason, but the primary reason is because when we see additional development, it's gonna cause us to have to do things that's gonna make us pay money. And the only way to pay the money and still keep the development is to fund those improvements through the new tax dollars, is that right?
That's the best...
I mean, if we had the money to pay for the water line out of pocket, we'd just do it and not mess with the TERS and accept all the tax dollars, right?
It's the best and most direct way to be able to know what you're getting for the money and where. You'll have to do things downtown eventually, like put your electrical underground, particularly in this alley right here, they're talking about having alley restaurants, and probably gonna need to put those utilities underground, that's very expensive. You gotta redo the alley so that if you're gonna have people traffic, so that ADA, that be ADA compliant for the back alley entrances, that type of thing. So it gets a little complicated, but the overall projects in general will be smaller. It's not like you're gonna spend ten million dollars on a railroad. And they'll be dictated by the type of development that comes, but you're correct, the most direct way to tie the two together is to have the tax dollars that are created by the increment to pay for that thing, whether it's, whether we finance it, or whether the owners and the developers finance it, it can go both ways. Generally, smaller projects are developer financed, and then we pay them out of their increment that they create.
Yeah, I would sure prefer to do that.
Oh, I always prefer to do that. You'd have to have a pretty, for instance, and that's a good example, you'd have to have a very large downtown development in order to justify moving that water line and tying it to that development. It's probably not gonna pencil out. But if you look at the overall increment a few years from now, and you've collected enough money in the entire TERS, you might can afford to move that water line and finance it. It's kind of a chicken and egg thing, once you get started, it kinda feeds itself. If you don't get started, it never will, and if you start it and the economy blows up, you have to wait. But if you have it in place, you can use it as a tool.
And when you have it in place, do you have to use it?
You don't ever have to use it.
That's something that's really important, too. So just because we have it in place, for example, if we all of a sudden become flush with cash, we don't have to use it.
No, but you have to collect the increment and put it in their account, and that money has to be used in projects in that district. This district's large enough, you can probably always find the project, or you can save it and use it later on. Anticipate starting at twenty, but it might go to thirty as far as the years. Again, that's why we hire these people, to give us choices, options, and advice. We've had this contract with them before, Charlie's already rewritten it, they sent it back this time with Charlie's original rewrites, and they both went back and forth and corrected a couple of things, and so this is Charlie Olson approved right here.
So we would only be approving them pretty much giving us advice on the TERS at this point?
Well, they'll prepare all the documents, once we get down the road, and the TERS Board looks at it. The other thing I'm proposing is that we use the same TERS Board. Having talent is a hard thing to come by for that kind of thing, and for now, you'd have the same members, you can change that later, but they'd have one meeting for TERS one adjourned, and then have one meeting for TERS two. Again, that's one of the things we'll look at going through here.
But I think what she's asking is, just because we're approving it, doesn't mean we are approving the zone.
No.
We're just approving the consideration.
Correct. You'd have to pass an ordinance to make the zone and put it in place and all that other stuff. You got a long ways to go, this is just starting. You can stop at any time, and the only money you use is lose, and you really don't lose that, is the money you spend on them. Which I think they're fifty-eight, they're not to exceed less expenses at fifty-eight, eight ninety-eight, which is, it's a little, Carolyn's not, that's a little cheaper than TERS one was, wasn't it?
About sixty-nine.
Okay.
And so we'll need these improvements, and then do we, I guess that's with the anticipation of businesses wanting to come into our downtown.
Right.
Because right now we have, I can't remember, what is it called? Bounds. Is this what's keeping them, like, on hold, or...
No, it has nothing to do with them. I actually put this on hold, waiting on them to kinda commit, and they've had their bank financing redone, so they're about to start, they told me. This would also include that in the apartment complex, we capture that if and when they build, but they're also having a hard time with financing. All multifamily projects are right now nationwide. I think they'll get there because we have actual stuff fixing to happen right now, we got people moving in, and they know there's a market, but they gotta find a bank that agrees with them. This also, remember, isn't just our Main Street, it also goes out eighty-four vote corrections.
Okay. Nice.
Anticipate it. Once they look at it, you may cut it back, you may expand it, but I can't imagine expanding it more than what I drew it out as, because I tried to draw my original thought on the commercial stuff and the adjacent residential that's gonna be new, that'll create a pretty good size increment, so that we can capture that and do the projects we need. What I'm thinking and what may happen may be two different things, and what they prove up or they show may be a third thing, so you'll have more decisions to make as we go, like, just like you did the last time. Some of you weren't here for all that, but it's, it can be a frustrating but rewarding process, I guess is the best way to put it.
How do we pay for the fees for them to...
We can be reimbursed out of the TERS money whenever it starts, if not, we'll just eat it. It'll be a general fund transaction if we don't actually create the TERS and create the increment. You'll front-end it.
And we do have some money for that.
Yeah, Carolyn, paying for this right now, let's assume that we don't get reimbursed by the TERS. We have money in the general fund to start paying these bills as the work goes forward in the general fund.
We have to cut James's salary, but we can get there. Yeah, since you didn't get me an elk, I'm just saying.
And so this is for downtown three seventeen and could be eighty-four, depending on what they propose. Okay.
Eighty-four out to the ranch, which is past Bayland, that old Boyd-Puett property, I included that. And I may have included those other, I may have included those commercial next to it, I don't remember. And then all the way down past the Dairy Queen.
Well, and then we have some new development coming up, too, right, on eighty-four with the apartments? Isn't there gonna be like...
Yeah, it includes those apartments there, but it doesn't go past, I didn't go on out to train, and I didn't include the parks subdivision, and that may be something we pick up. It's just kind of a stretch to go that far, and there's some more stuff out there, but I kinda stopped where I kinda knew where things were going without taking too much residential, but they may recommend picking it up. I did include all of our utility corridor, that old railroad right away, all the way out, because we're probably planning on putting a trail in there, and that way we can use part of this money for that in the future if we needed to.
And that water line is at Main and eighty-four? Or where did you say that one?
The water line that's a hundred years old?
Mm-hmm.
It's in Main Street hallway.
Okay.
Whenever you see these big leaks in Main Street, it's always that line. We've mitigated that issue considerably, but you still have one. The last one we had in the intersection down there, we spent thirty, how many? How much money did we spend on those valves?
About thirty thousand per, we installed two, three valves, two insertion valves on, one on the north side and one on the south side, so we can isolate that intersection.
So we have any more leaks in that intersection, we can shut it down and not destroy the world of water. That was a lot's idea, and it was a timely, timely thing to do. Trying to get your water system where it can be managed a little more efficiently. I think we found all the valves that have been turned off for decades. I oughta knock on wood for that one, we may find some more.
Okay, is there a motion on item three to, not to pass it, but to go forward with the idea of a future TERS?
I just need some paperwork. Let's see, I move that we approve the professional services agreement between Knutson LP and the City of McGregor for consulting services for creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone.
There's a motion to second on item three. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And motion carries. To four, is discussion of possible action regarding the appointment of Brian Lamillier? Is that kinda close?
Yes, sir.
City planner to the Administrative Agency for the Joint Airport Board to replace Mike Olson, as recommended by City Manager Kevin Evans.
This is the person that attends the meetings with me, it's the administrative board, there's two people from the City Manager's office of Waco on that board, which is Deidre Emerson, oh, no, and their planner, Clint Peters, one person from City Manager's job and their planner, and I would like to have my planner on that board as well, and I think this officially replaces Mike on everything we have except the contract we have with them for building inspections, isn't that right? Is he gone now, if we do this? Okay. Please, please appoint Brian Lamillier to this position.
All right, is there a motion on four, that makes sense?
I move to appoint Brian, uh, why you say that?
Lamillier.
Lamillier, the City Planner to the Administrative Agency for the Joint Airport Board to replace Mike Olson.
Say.
There's a motion to second on item four, any other questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And motion carries. To five, receive financials as of October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, and the third and fourth quarterly investment reports.
Mayor and Council, first off, I'd like to remind you all, this is a snapshot in time. October's always rough because we're, I'm still closing out last year, so there's still some accruals to be... So there's still some accruals to be made. So you're still going to see some changes as we move forward with next month's report. But for right now, general fund is sitting at five point nine four percent. Uh, and October is eight point three-three percent of the year. Uh, our expenses are right on target at eight three four. Uh, utility fund, that's one that, that includes two months. So that's going to totally change. Uh, and then the expenses are at eleven. Your exchange event center is at negative two point three and eighteen point three for expenditures. And the airport is at sixty-three and ten point four for expenditures. Our net cash in bank is two point two million more than the same period last year. Operating accounts are up twenty-five thousand. Pool cash is up two million and grants are up to six sixty-five. Why capital projects and debt services decreased one hundred and sixty-eight and four hundred and one thousand respectively. Our general fund net cash flow is three hundred and ten thousand, lower than the previous year. Revenues down thirteen seven and expenditures are up two hundred and ninety-seven. Uh, the revenue decrease is mainly due to lower ad valorem taxes, expenditure accruals, as I stated. Because when I expense them back to September, it will credit October. So it's going to reduce the amount of expense in October. Uh, the exchange net cash flows are down thirty-four as compared to the same period last year. Revenues are down sixteen point seven and expenses are up seventeen. Party rental refund of four thousand five hundred and a sanitation refund of five thousand was the cause of the negative revenue for October. And contracted services are up twelve point nine and personnel costs were up five point three. Our municipal airport net cash flows are down three point six as compared to October of last year. Revenues are up two hundred and forty-five dollars and expenses are up three point eight. And that's just the detail list for y'all of the individual cash accounts and what's, what's in them. Uh, and then there's the expenditures, the revenues and expenditures and the, the net cash flows for each one for this year and last year's October. And then there's just again, what I verbally said, showing you a picture of, of what's, the operating account is up, debt service is down, capital projects and grants, and then the pool cash.
Why would the debt service be down that much?
Because I paid all the debt payments in August. Uh, so I had built up the money in the account and then I, I do an allocation each month for like eleventh or it depends on when it's due. And so then when I spend it, of course, it takes all that money away. Okay, and then this one was pretty impressive to me. Um, this one, I flipped the chart on you. It's now going from the oldest to the most current. And this is for October to October of each year for the last ten years. And October of last year was right at a hundred thousand less than October of this year in sales tax revenue. I double checked it because I couldn't believe it. So.
Why would that be?
Eggs, eggs have gotten really expensive.
Eggs are very expensive, I agree.
They still pay sales tax on eggs.
That's right. Okay, I don't know why then.
I mean, does anybody even have a guess what that is?
The only guess I would have is something that's basically, because there's going to be people out here that spend big money in a hurry. It's just a guess. We can, we can research and find out, probably will.
Sales tax.
Yeah, that trend might look a little bit different.
Okay, and then there's your June investment report. And if you'll skip to the next one, because I mean, they're cumulative. So I figure we'll go over the September one, uh, because it's the most current. And now I gotta see if I can read this tiny, tiny print. Your cash was twenty-nine million from all sources. Your change in cash from quarter to quarter was, it increased a hundred and forty-four thousand. Your interest for the quarter was one twenty-one. And for the year, your interest was two hundred and, help. It's that last one on the third line at the bottom, two oh four, two hundred and four thousand. So we collected quite a bit. Of course, the TERS has a lot to do with that interest because this includes that money as well. And the investment return on that. You'll see our bank, our pool, uh, hold seventy-nine percent of our money. And the bank holds twenty-one percent as of September thirtieth.
You are about to start spending money out of that TERS, uh, the water line, of course, you've awarded that bid. Rail plans, I found out last Friday, are, will be a hundred percent and submitted to BNSF probably this week. If not, it will be before Christmas. So, uh, they'll start hoarding the switches and that money will really start being spent.
So the money's coming in from the bonds and it's been funded in the account.
We're in the bank, we put the cash in the bank. Some of the news we got from BNSF wasn't that great, but it'll balance out over time and I'll talk a little bit about that later.
Anything else, Carolyn?
No, sir, just.
What's your overall impression of where we are compared to this time last year?
It looked, I mean, as far as until everything's done, it's hard to say for sure. But it looks like we're pretty well the same. I mean, there's not, not been a lot of difference. So we're lower on collections for ad valorem tax. I did notice that as compared to this time last year, but that'll pick up.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Carolyn? Okay, thank you for the report. Kevin, we got a closed meeting?
Yes, sir.
So let's do that. Closed meeting pursuant to chapter five fifty-one Texas government code in accordance with the authority contained in section five fifty-one oh seventy-one legal, seventy-two real estate and point zero eight seven economic development. And that is, uh, section five fifty-one oh eighty-seven, discussion regarding economic development negotiations including commercial or financial information received from a business prospect seeking to locate, stay or expand in or near the City of McGregor and to discuss economic development negotiations and/or deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect. It is seven twenty-eight. We'll recess into executive session and be back to take any action.
Okay, there's no action to take coming out of executive session that takes us to item seven. Announcements from the city manager.
Several little things to run over. The chamber executive Marissa McGuire is leaving us.
What?
She is going back into her profession of hospitality and will be the general manager of the AC Hotel by Marriott in downtown Waco. That's one of their top flags. She has worked with the board of directors and they have found her replacement who is coming to us, Frank Hewitt, I think with second command there. And I don't know when she starts, when she starts. But anyway, they pay 100% of the personnel cost for that slot now, so we don't have Yeah. We by choice don't have anything to do with the hiring and termination.
No salary.
But I wanted to let you know Marissa's done a stellar job here and it looks like the lady's going to take her place. We'll do nothing but carry that forward and keep going. The Christmas parade this last Saturday went very well. I had quite a few entries and had a niece show up to my house for my wife's Christmas in her Jeep, ran and decorated her Jeep and they got in the parade. If you know me, you really know that I do not understand that and that's okay. I don't have to understand everything that goes on in the world. Christmas festival is the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, is that right?
Yes.
And gonna be a pretty neat deal from everything I understand. Gonna be from 317 on third down past and all around the exchange. Wanted to make sure you understood that there are in official process right now about six to 700 housing units. That means they've actually submitted paperwork that has been or will be very soon looked at by the planning and zoning and you've already looked at two of them. We've got another big one coming that will be the parks and I'm still working on the apartments but Hawn and let's see is the ranch, no, the ranch is coming too.
Ranch, Cotton Belt.
Oh, Cotton Belt, that's the one I forgot. Cotton Belt and Hawn's are kind of in a competition. That's your two half acre subdivisions and they're both pushing pretty hard. And that's all I've got. Oh, oh, no. Duplexes in or by specific use process. I was trying to get a moratorium ordinance on this meeting for that. You'll see it on your next meeting and really what we'll probably end up doing is just amending the ordinances or the ordinance or ordinances that allowed it, but at the last minute kind of didn't feel good enough coming forward. I want Charlie to look at it a little more with Brian and Angela has helped Brian go find the ordinances. We didn't codify them yet, is that right?
We have, we have one that hasn't been codified, but we would have to go back for the residential and kind of reword how it is.
So Charlie's going to work on that and bring it forward so that we can put that in abeyance or at least shut it off and you can always do it later. We're not choosing to disallow it in subdivisions that are designed for it.
Yeah.
So you already approved preliminary plans on some of those and we're, I'm not going to shake those out, but we're gonna, what's the word I'm looking for? Narrow its focus. That's best way to put it. But anybody bringing in, we're discouraging now, but if they file it, what we're telling them is you're probably not going to get that, but you have a right to file it because it's on the books, but you also have a right to turn it down. And I don't know that we've got anybody in a position to do that yet, do we?
Just the one single, that'll be up for next month for final.
That they've already preliminary done, yeah.
One of the developments, what they developed a month ago, so they kind of, that's.
But it's a development. Okay. That's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
It's all good info. Anybody else? Next item?
If we're going to be talking about parks now near that area, the last time a lot of the residents came in to that meeting, I remember us telling them if there was something involving parks. Remember they were saying none of us got a letter, you know, we said we would let them know if we'd just be reminded to just kind of keep.
Down Brian. Down Brian.
My chubby butt walked in every single one of those houses. They all got one on the door.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
And one lady called him and said, why did you skip me? And he goes, I didn't. And her husband admitted to having found it.
Well, thank you. That's very nice of you.
Now, the one you should think as well is Angela who remembered it.
Well, thank you Angela because like I said, I heard Jose Parks and I was like, well, I remember. We told them.
I tried to get Angela to go out there with him, but she refused. She's hard headed that way.
No, I'm just kidding.
Anybody else?
Next time Brian, you can call me. I'll go with you.
All right. It's 8:15. This meeting's adjourned.
I've already walked those streets anyway, so.